My name is Lynn Miller. Because our first Tuesday, Thursday was washed out. So this, this is the October planning meeting. First item is approval of the agenda, but I need to add one item to the agenda and that's the location for this meeting for the rest of the year. Because the operations center got flooded. So that we need to add that to the agenda, otherwise I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'm making a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of the new location for the rest of the year at City Hall.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
All right.
Okay, so the first item on the agenda is the location for this meeting for the rest of the year. It has been proposed that we meet here. On November fourteenth and December the twelfth. Can somebody make a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Okay, do we have a second? It was Barbara and.
Donna.
Donna, I'm sorry.
Know your committee chairman.
Okay, so we have a, we have a first and second, so we have a vote, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Second item on the agenda is an administrative review, correct?
Yes, sir.
And I would like to just preface. An administrative review is different from an item on the agenda such as a change in zoning, you know, one zoning. Ordinance to another zoning ordinance on a piece of property, it's different from conditional zoning where we can place conditions on a property that's about to be developed. This is just a review to make sure. That whatever's being proposed at this location meets. The zoning ordinance and it's I, I one?
Correct.
Which means. Are tennis courts and soccer fields and ball fields allowed in I one?
Yes.
Parking spaces?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board. My name is Tyler Morrow. I'm the current planning manager. For the city of Hendersonville. The city of Hendersonville has received an application for preliminary site plan review. From Henderson County for the Berkeley Mills Sports Complex project. To further kind of elaborate on administrative review, as the chairman mentioned, this is an administrative review. Our ordinance defines administrative reviews as a decision made. In implementation, administration, or enforcement of the zoning ordinance that involve the determination of fact. The application of objective standards set forth in the zoning ordinance. Simply put, the planning board's administrative review of this project is to ensure that the preliminary site plan meets all applicable requirements. For projects at this stage in the process. If the project meet all applicable requirements, then the planning board must grant approval. The planning board can determine three possible outcomes for today's application. Approval of the preliminary site plan as presented. Approval of the preliminary site plan with conditions. And those conditions have to revolve around any way that the site plan is not currently meeting the ordinance. And then lastly, the planning board can vote to deny the application, but must provide the reasoning for the denial. And specifically state which sections of the ordinance are not currently being met in the denial, denial motion. Any project that adds more than thirty parking spaces must be reviewed by the planning board, so that is what's triggering this step in the process. Unlike most developments that you all review as a board, a development of this size is permitted by right in I one and does not require a rezoning. Approval of a preliminary site plan does not entitle the applicant to the issuance of a zoning compliance permit or final site plan approval. The developer will still be required to submit full construction drawings to, to staff to review. As well as any other required permitting. As previously mentioned, the city of Hendersonville was petitioned by the Henderson County government. To construct this sports complex. The property is not owned by the city of Hendersonville and is not a city of Hendersonville project. Subject property is owned by Henderson County government and will be constructed by Henderson County if approved. The city is required to review this project in accordance with zoning ordinance like we would for any other project proposed by a property owner within the city's jurisdiction. Outside of ensuring the plans are in full compliance with zoning ordinance, the city of Hendersonville does not have input on the layout, makeup, or use of the property. Outside normal land use regulations. These decisions would be made by Henderson County and their consultants. We're moving into the project details for another parcel. The project is located at forty-nine and sixty-nine Balfour Road. The property is zone I one industrial, it's approximately thirty-eight point three nine acres and is currently operated as a park. The subject property is on I one industrial and is currently a park. The existing park contains various walking trails, picnic, shelter facilities. And a nationally registered historic baseball field and grandstands. There are various districts and uses surrounding the subject property. The subject property and all adjacent property to the north, east, and south are zoned for industrial uses. Some of these uses include the city's wastewater treatment plant and Kimberly Clark. This area has historically been used for industrial purposes. Historic baseball field located on the subject property was originally used for the Berkeley Mills Spinners baseball team in the Industrial League of the nineteen forties. The actual highway corridor is on C three highway business is made up of uses synonymous with this type of corridor. There are four single-family home parcels adjacent to the subject property. If approved, these parcels will be required to buffer from this new complex. So we're moving in some site photos. So the photos on the top left show the view of the subject property towards the baseball field from Balfour Road. The photo on the top right shows historic baseball field, grandstands and field. The photo on the bottom left corner shows existing shelter facilities that would be removed. The photo on the bottom right shows one of the working, walking paths on the property. So getting more specific into what is being proposed with this development. The historic baseball field and stands will remain. It's been stated by the site designer that the proposed. Project will not impact the existing baseball field or its facilities. The development is proposed, is proposing four new soccer fields, one new softball field and six new tennis courts. The site itself has a small amount of five hundred year and one hundred year floodplain present on the northern end of the property. There are two blue line streams present or near the subject property which would be required to meet our buffering requirements. The site is proposed to have one main access on the southwest side of the property. There's also secondary access to a standalone parking lot on the southeast side of the property. The standalone parking lot entrance would directly be across from the Oklahua parking driveway. The parking, the, the site is proposing three hundred and fourteen spaces to serve this development. Landscaping, a ten-foot type B buffer would be required along the single-family homes to the east. Vehicle use landscaping would be required. Street trees would be required, common open space, plantings would be required. Tree preservation was triggered by this development. There's an existing tree canopy of seventeen point six one acres. The tree canopy that's proposed to be saved is four point zero four acres, which is roughly twenty-two point nine percent. Due to the tree preservation not exceeding thirty percent, tier two plantings would be required to offset the additional. Tree preservation loss. Lastly, as far as zoning code compliance is concerned, based on the review by staff, the submitted preliminary site plan for the Berkeley Mills Sports Complex. Project does meet the zoning ordinance standards. Established for this type of project within the I one industrial district and preliminary site plan requirements. I'm happy to answer any questions you all may have. Chris Todd, the assistant county manager is in attendance and so are the site designers from Withersdravenale. Do you have any questions for them?
Does anybody have a question?
And maybe this for staff, what is tier two landscaping?
Yeah, so tier two, so the bare minimum that you're allowed to save on a site such as this is twenty percent of the existing tree canopy. With the intent that saving thirty percent would be ideal. If for any development that does not protect that thirty percent, they have to plant additional plantings to basically take them above the thirty percent with new canopy. So if you, for example, if you only save the twenty percent, you have to provide fifteen percent extra, so thirty-five percent in total of. Of tree canopy, which is supplemented by those new plantings.
One more question if I could, Mr. Chairman. Well, I want to ask you.
Okay.
Ask him. Three hundred and fourteen parking spaces. What are they going to be composed of asphalt?
To my knowledge, yes. The specifics of the makeup would probably be better suited for the design team, but. Likely asphalt. We don't have a requirement that it be anything other, so whatever type of materials that they propose.
I, I always just think that pervious paint papers would be a really good application here.
Yeah, so that, that would be great to talk to either Henderson County or their site designers.
Any other questions for city staff? Go ahead, Bob.
The ballpark that's already there, it looks a little rough as the project, I mean, encompass fixing that up at all.
So also probably a better question for them. As the site designers, but to our knowledge, I don't know about renovating the existing ballpark. We know that they will remain. And likely not be demolished through this project. So that's more of what our realm is, whether it's going to be renovated, I don't know. That'd be a good question for the applicant.
Any other questions for city staff? Okay, what, the applicant is Henderson County. Who's here counted?
Chris Todd, the assistant county manager and then also the design team from Withersdravenale.
Chris, and introduce your team behind.
I'm happy to. My name's Christopher Todd. I'm the assistant county manager, proud to be here and happy to be a part of this project. I'm gonna introduce my team that was behind us real quick. So we have. From Withersdravenale, we have Jason Burguncino and Allison Alexander who are here. And frankly, when it comes to a lot of the technical things, they know more than I do because I play an engineer, but I'm not one. I'll give you a brief history of how we got to this project though and where we are today and its importance. It's been, it's been twenty years probably. That's members of this community have been asking for better specifically soccer facilities. Now, that's not to negate the decades and the requests of all the other sporting facilities in this county over that same timeframe. Over the past. Three years with the use of the ARPA federal funding. The Henderson County Board of Commissioners tasked the staff to go out and find a piece of land that would be suitable to have additional soccer fields. Which are really flat rectangular fields. So any sport in which can be played on a flat rectangular field. Can be played on these because they're going to be sized appropriately for that. And through that search, a partner came forward and that partner was the Henderson County Public School System. They approached us with the goal of us coming and using land that was in their ownership, the Berkeley Mills property, to develop it. That partnership has been discussed publicly and voted on even by both boards. And has been actually submitted late in all fairness, but to y'all's record of an interlocal agreement signed by both boards. What that interlocal agreement says. And what Henderson County and the school systems have committed to doing is to first. Build a property that is designed for all of these particular amenities. Those amenities are to include four full-size soccer fields. Those amenities are to include a softball facility. And six tennis courts with those two specifically being designed to the North Carolina Athletic Association Center for the high schools. Right? So they will meet the needs of high school age students here in our county and those that travel in. Additionally, within that agreement, it talks about all the parking and necessary amenities that would go along with that. Now that agreement and that conversation, because we are using federal dollars, which the county intends to bid publicly and. Is it seven days, Jason?
Seven days.
First, thank you. In seven days, we will release bids to the construction market to receive them back. Because we are obligated to spend these federal dollars to outwell, we are obligated to obligate these federal dollars by the end of this calendar year and to have them expended. In two years' time, so at the end of twenty twenty-six, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. That was an aggressive schedule. I'm really openly pleased with Withersdravenale and all the work that they've done. I'm extremely thankful for the work of the city of Hendersonville and their team and walking us through their process so that we understood it and we could meet it. And I'm thankful to the Henderson County Public Schools for their partnership. We have met with them since the very beginning. Frankly, we've met with them since even before this started because we knew this agreement was coming. Our most recent meeting with them was on September the sixteenth. We would have likely had another one. But there's been an event occurring in Henderson County that took a great deal of time since the twenty-eighth. And I don't want to downplay that. Because it was significant and impactful to many of our residents' lives. But we've continued on full steam because this project is of importance to the community. This is a project that will take federal dollars and actually let the people paying that debt back use it. Because that debt's going to be paid by my grandchildren, frankly. And they get to actually go out and play on these fields and for that I'm significantly and overwhelmingly proud. If you've got technical questions or others, I'd be happy to try to answer what I can, but I'd also love to invite. Jason up, who's actually an engineer and knows what he's talking about.
So there was one question, I think, about the existing historic ball field. Getting a facelift, is that in the plans?
So the existing historic ball field for a couple of reasons is getting very lightly touched. Specifically, it's going to get new lighting. That is the touch that that field will be getting, but that lighting is going to be placed outside. Of the project area, which is clearly defined in the site plan that you all have in front of you. One of the things that we had to do is that we had to make sure that we were working with the state of North Carolina because this is a property on the National Register of Historic Places. We acknowledge that and we've been working with the state since the beginning of this project becoming something truly real. And their timeline to administratively go through and even paint that facility was frankly unacceptable for the rest of this project. Right? They were great. They've been great partners. But there are bureaucracy amongst themselves and I can appreciate that. We have every intent as the county to preserve that historic character. One thing I'll say that I think is fascinating about this project. This project will bring a new light and a new generation to a historic place. That has never used it before. This project will give more people in seats in that facility than has been so for decades. We'll have parking that's ADA. We'll have restrooms that are ADA. We will have the ability to bring in larger amounts of concessions and food opportunities to support the use of all the facilities on the property. And for that, I'm also immensely proud. Because we are able to actually, over, over the course of the next few years. Breathe a new life into an old ball field. That's a cornerstone of this community and a significant part of our history. The storm really led me to do it, but I've been rereading from the banks of the Oklahua. For the last week or so, I've allowed myself ten pages a day. Because I've been working. But. It's, it's been immensely revealing to see the strong history of this place. And the residents who have fought to preserve it. In no way, shape, or form do I feel like this project frankly is harming that. I feel like this project is bringing a new light and a new phase. And I thank everybody for their efforts and involvement and investment in bringing this project forward.
Do we have any questions for the applicant Henderson?
I just have a general question. The public will hike there from time to time. Is that still going to be allowed for the general public or are not?
You, I'm sorry, I didn't have here.
So I myself go there and hike, you know?
Certainly.
The property, is that still going to be allowed?
We, we're going to have walking paths through the property that are on your site plan. The property is a public park and the facilities will continue to be, remain open to the public at large. There is obviously a partnership with the Henderson County Public Schools. Who have a priority over the use of the baseball, softball, and tennis facilities. But beyond that, it'll remain a public park, open to the public like every other facility that we have in the county.
Any other questions for the applicants? I do have questions. You mentioned both boards. You're talking the school board and county commissioners or?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so city, has this, this has not been. Looked at by city, this is going to be the only review by the city of Hendersonville is this administrative review, is that correct? And then of course, staff, planning and.
Yeah, yeah, so this would be the like land use review. So it doesn't require rezoning, so it wouldn't go to city council. So this is that review that would, that they.
Okay, and then. Ball field, tennis court, soccer field, lighting. We have, the city of Hendersonville has a lighting ordinance. Where, where light cannot bleed, especially into a residential area. I know there's some homes that back up to the park. Is, is there a lighting? Schematic or have you, have you made sure that lighting is not going to bleed into that residential area?
Yes, so we're, we're working with the ball field lighting consultants. That's really the, the only concern of the. Ball field lighting, the parking lot lighting and whatnot, don't seem to be impacting those areas at all. There is going to have to be from a technical standpoint, some, some hoods and some things of that nature. The. Will light be visible if you looked at it, it pulled the light would, yes. The really good thing about LED. Lighting systems is they don't bleed at the ground level, so very, very much so, but yes, we. Tyler can tell you, we're responsible for meeting all of the ordinances with regard to bleed relative to property lines, stream buffers, anything of that nature.
And do you feel like the fact that this has been fast-tracked, do you feel like all the? Eyes have been dotted, please? I mean, it really, I mean, there was an article in the paper, what, three months ago saying this was being considered? And here we are today, and I know the money has to be appropriated by the end of the year. And I, I think, you know, the general consensus within the community is that we, we need these facilities. But I just want to make sure that like, because it was fast-tracked, that, that your organization, the county have really spent the time they need.
So I've, I've already said this once publicly and I'm, I'm happy to answer your question. One of the reasons that we chose Withersdravenale. Is that they had the horsepower for the timeline in which we needed to accomplish this. I've alluded to this storm throughout it. One of the gifts that we were given for this particular project is that their Wellington office normally impacted by hurricanes was not. And they kept working. I also frankly, I'll speak highly again of your, your planning staff. They. They've dug through this plan and I appreciate the extra energy and time that they've had to put into it to make sure that we're. Meeting the rules because we intend to, right? So yes, I feel confident between a very competent engineering team. A dedicated city staff, a dedicated county staff. That we, we're going to meet every intention of your ordinance. And that we're going to provide a high-quality project for which the county and the city of Hendersonville continue to benefit from.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
I have a question. Tyler, when, when you explained what administrative review was. Do I understand that this board's only challenge or question to answer today is just. Does the project meet the zoning requirements of the city?
Correct, so that is the only task that this board would be undertaking was just confirming. Compliance with the zoning ordinance and the current standards of such.
And that, and that was triggered by the number of parking spaces?
Correct, yes, sir.
Any other questions? Okay, we are going to open up public comment. However, I really would, if, in other words, I've heard that there's some concerns that perhaps the Bearcat baseball team may not be able to play. There next year because of the construction. That's something you probably want to take up with the school board or the county commissioners because they're going to be developing this project. This is an administrative review. If, if tennis courts and soccer fields and ball fields and parking spaces are allowed in I one, which they are. And this is zoned I one, which is quite honestly our least restrictive zoning ordinance in the city. You're allowed to have industry, it's industrial. So if you've got a comment that says, hey, this doesn't meet the zoning ordinance and do you see something that we have not? Come on up and tell us what you're thinking, but if it's. If it's regarding something other than that, I would just say there's really nothing we can do to help you. You really need to speak to your county commissioner. To your county manager, to the school board, to your, to your athletic department, but, but we're going to open up public comment. Come on up if you've got something to say, give us your name and address. That's important and tell us what you're thinking.
And I do want to clarify a couple of things. There's one question that, that was not answered relative to the paving of the parking lots and whatnot. Again, given the budget at this point in time, we are proposing asphalt parking lots with this project. However, every. Single, if we care what I say, every single square inch, but the ordinance requires every single square inch of impervious surface. To be treated through a stormwater management device. And so we have three different stormwater ponds and underground storage. Facilities as well to try to capture all that impervious surface and treat it before it's released in the environment. So that. That is item number one. The dotted I's and crossing the T's from, from a zoning compliance standpoint and everything else is. As Chris mentioned, we've been working really, really hard. I credit our staff much more so than I do myself. Of getting there and I think that's reflected in the staff report. You know, there's always minutia in there that's going on and I wanted to clarify that as it relates to timing. I know there's a lot of folks here. That are going to speak about timing and whatnot. I agree wholeheartedly with your statement that that's a conversation that probably happens outside of. Of us with the school board and with the county, but I do want everyone to understand that while we are. Required to have the funds obligated by the end of the year, we do not anticipate construction starting until into the springtime. In any way, shape, or form. So perhaps there's room for those conversations to occur. Anyone that, that's been here, I've said we're open-minded to have those conversations, but to your point, that really needs to be facilitated at the school level. They may have other reasons beyond just a simple site why that happens. There will be an active construction site at some point into the spring. And so there may be some safety concerns and other conversations there, but I just, I wanted to make sure that everyone is clear. We agree, but we do not, there is not going to be available, those are on site in December on this project. It's going to be into the spring before that happens.
And then the other thing is, I guess, because it's been on such a fast track. There haven't been a lot of opportunities for the public to make comments.
Correct.
Are, are there going to be those opportunities?
Well, I, I believe as far as pure process goes, that, that is, this is that meeting and again, I would welcome anybody here. As I would in any project I'm ever involved with to make whatever comments that they feel are appropriate. I, I certainly as a designer have.
I, I need to disagree with you there.
Well, I'm just saying it's, it's appropriate, but I'm just.
This is an administrative review by the planning board.
Okay.
For the city to say, does what's proposed meet the ordinance and it's a live review. It's not, it's not to talk about will the Bearcats be playing ball there this spring? And I know that's a big concern. I know it is. Where are they going to play this spring? We've got, you know, we've got, it looks like some, maybe some high school students here that are maybe juniors and seniors worried about their senior year of baseball. And I get that, I get that, but the, the, an administrative view by the planning board is not the forum for those types of conversations. They need to happen, they haven't happened.
Yes.
Right, so when, when and where do they happen? I think that maybe perhaps when I walked in the room, I couldn't believe the number of people in here for administrative review. Thank you for being here.
Every day is, give us another week. We are, we are here, we're staying, we love it. We love the idea of accommodating.
You know, favors is important project, but the timeline is what everybody's concerned.
Yeah, and again, I want to echo your comments from earlier. I, I think that, that there are other forums. There, there's not an administrative hearing. I'm happy to just, I know this is the place and I'll, and I'm bad to ramble.
Go ahead, I think everybody can kind of hear some things.
So again, my name's Christopher Todd. I know some of y'all. I've seen some of y'all before. If I don't know you, I'm happy to be your friend. We, this has been an expedited project. That's most certainly true. Government is typically slow. The reason that government is typically slow is by design because slow is inherently transparent. Some people call it inefficient. I like to think that it's transparency, but I'm a lifelong bureaucrat. Rear-trained even, Lou. But. This is unique. And in a given time period where we had more time, there would have been more meetings and that is certainly true. One of the things that the county has attempted to do, and I think we've done well, and I'll speak highly of the school staff as well. We have involved the school board and its professional staff from the very, very. We have involved the school board and its professional staff from the very, very, very beginning. Um, in our last conversation with them again on September the sixteenth, where we all sat in a room with these folks as well and had that conversation. We expressed to them a desire to find a way. Uh, to preserve as many of the seasons in that facility as possible. Um, and communicated to them that that was going to be a continuing and ongoing conversation, which it is. One thing that is still frankly an unknown is because this project is being hard bid with an aggressive schedule for construction. Um, is that we need to get a contractor on board and be able to work with those folks and build a relationship to make sure that we can. Design the space in a way that likely won't impact, well, I won't even say likely, I feel like that's an unfair statement right now. That would hopefully not impact this upcoming season. The chance of it impacting another s- one of the two, though, I'll be honest, uh, that chance exists. Um, there, if you've been there, and you'll see this on a site plan, this is no secret. Uh, the amount of earthwork that is going to occur out there is immense. Uh, I I'll speak again, I'm proud of this team who found a solution to get. To get the facilities in there that the community had been asking for, that the school board had asked for. Um, to do that in expedited timeline required us to move forward. Um, this has been a topic that has been presented to the Henderson County Board of Commissioners at every construction update. Uh, which is their mid-month meeting, uh, since they greenlit this project. Uh, and we've updated it every time we could publicly. We're gonna continue to do that. Um, if there is any person in this room who wants to hold a meeting with me and or the school board, I'm welcome to have it. I am not fearful of conversation. Let's get the school board involved and have a.
Administrator, this is especially. We 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 came together so that we could perform this review, so things could move forward. Whereas it wasn't gonna happen until November the fourteenth. So we're here, we came together for an administrative review.
Yes.
I understand the public has not had an opportunity because this has been on a fast track, but this is not the forum.
And I just, I just wanted to answer your question about the expedited nature of of that project. And to let to let you as a as a board know and to let the public know that this conversation has occurred as publicly as it could in the board of commissioners meetings. I know this conversation has occurred at least at a few school board meetings. Um, we've submitted the site plans and had them posted publicly. They were printed. Well, they've changed somewhat and refined, refined is a better word than changed. Um, they've been in the paper. Um, and I and I and I fully stand here today saying to the public, this is not the typical way forward. However, given the time constraints and the ability to spend the money. Uh, it was a decision to move this process as aggressively as it could to spend that money and to accomplish this project. That does not negate or take away from the ability to have future meetings outside of the scope of of y'alls. Current um process to meet with the school board and or the public in any sort of capacity. And I'll just say that for the for the members of this of the public.
Okay, we do have um an opportunity for public comment, but again, unless. Unless it has something to do with why this plan does not meet the zoning ordinance for I one.
Understand. My name is Lynn Milner, one five nine Skyline Drive. I have a senior Hendersonville High School. We understand everything that you're saying. Um, and and we support this plan. It's gonna be a beautiful, beautiful thing for the facilities, for the people of Hendersonville, for the county, for Hendersonville High School in the future. But we were given no warning. We got, we got, we got, three days ago, we were told, we're out, you're gone, you're going to a facility that's that is not, that is not. Ready to handle uh a high school baseball with the floods. Um, and we were told, and and I personally reached out, and I'm not gonna call names, but I personally reached out to people of power and 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 authority. And and we were not even given a chance to speak. So while we understand the the process of this board is what it is. We are begging. The opportunity to speak with with this man, which I've already spoke to, with you. Um, every one of us to 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 be able to say there has to be. We put a plan together to build a high school with students on site. We have to, and and then COVID happened. Changed everything and they got it done quicker. We have to be able to. Do what we need to do at Berkeley Mills Sports Pond Place, which is gonna be beautiful, but still. Give these guys, these students, what they deserve. Before they had that park, we had no JV program. Before they had Berkeley, they were winning one game a year, and it was a laughing stock. Since we've moved to Berkeley, we've built a JV team. We qualified for the state playoffs two years in a row. We have uh. Games that we should have, that we were in gave gave teams games that they didn't receive in the rest of the state playoffs. This year, as our seniors and our juniors, we have an opportunity for a conference championship and to host a playoff. Hendersonville High School has a beautiful school. All the other county schools have beautiful schools and beautiful programs, and Berkeley Mills will be that for us. But in the meantime, we have to, we have to develop a plan to give these seniors and these juniors their home. To play ball in as we move forward with this, and we understand what we're saying has nothing to do with what you're approving, but no one else gave us an opportunity, and this was the forum. This was the forum, and I'll 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 say. Yeah, somebody mentioned something about taking care of the park. I'll go ahead and tell you. I I I've done the best I can with the resources I have. I've been cutting that field and and taking care of the grass. For the past, since all mid-August. Our our baseball coach, Luke Dotson, who couldn't be here, he's been cutting the grass. We've been doing everything within our power with what's been given to us to make that place look as good as we possibly can. These boys, these parents have come and worked and cleaned and 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 took out garbage and done all the work. To to keep the places as good as we possibly can do it, but we have limitations. So we're just begging you, the school board, to listen to us. To develop with this gentleman and his company the opportunity to give these guys what they deserve. Thank you very much.
You all have anything to say? And come on up.
Ken Fitch, ten forty-six Patton Street. Um, as you know, I submitted photographs of the site extensive. And you and you reviewed those. Um, the one comment I would like to make is this. Um, the city policy. For addressing natural, national historic sites is to follow the Secretary of the Interior's standards. For the treatment of historic properties. That that is in several of the ordinances. And clearly, the hope and the request here is. That those Secretary of the Interior standards and guidance would be followed in this case. Because the surrounding area will experience considerable alteration in terrain and infrastructure. With construction impacts of varying degrees. So following those standards would ensure the preservation of of the ballpark, which is the intent. So it has not been stated as such, it may mean that there's specific materials, but to know that that. Will be in place, that's consistent with the city's direction. And also, as federal funds are involved in the project, compliance with those federal standards. For preservation would be appropriate. Um, there are issues, um, the picture, the uh, the lower corner of of, you see that? That's an issue like you're going to have two flights of stairs and a ramp there. And I'm just, the question is, does that comply with the city ordinances? Because that's, that's a very tricky situation to do that and also protect the stadium. I mean, right, there it is. The the other specific uh issue uh is that. On the on the plan, when you look at. Out from the stadium to the field is, that picture isn't up here. And you're looking at the outfield. Uh, no, not, that's not it. Um, you, there's a fence uh at 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 the end of the field. And there's gonna be a parking area. Behind behind that fence. And at the end of the parking area is a loading zone. So the question is, that's, that's quite a distance to walk from that loading zone. To get to the stadium and the softball field. That's quite a trek to to make. And they say, well, you you have to deal with that, but. What happens if there's a medical emergency on either field? How does EMS get to the field and deal with that emergency? And if there's a fire event, how does the fire vehicle access the site? Because there's there's no road access, because that's the roads, existing roads are being taken by the softball field. So that's just a basic safety issue and functioning issue. Um, I I agree, this is a very important site, and the fact that. Generations to come can play on this site, I think that's, that's really a a gift to us all. But in terms of how the site functions. And 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 I I don't know what the ordinance does to protect the situation. When you have the the stadium is built into the hill, that's part of the design. So but there's all kinds of issues with stormwater and everything, and if you start altering the terrain. What are the guidelines for that in the ordinance? Because you have very difficult situations to realize. And we have questions here. I mean, the room is full of questions. The neighbors have questions. They wanna know what 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 is the type B buffer, for example? They wanna know, they're here. But so the lack of information is a problem. But there are very difficult situations that have to be engineered, and. The concern is, how do we know that that's compliant with the ordinance for the information we have? So, but uh, there's the stadium is part of history, but it should continue to be so. And so the young people and future generations can play on the field where their ancestors played.
Ken mentioned some of the neighbors here. You folks live on Bow Four Road, right there. Oh, my goodness. Come on up. We put, we put a sewage treatment plant on one side of you, now a ballpark with lights on the other side of you.
I have the land that's at ninety-one and ninety-three Bow Four Road.
What's your name?
David Dalton.
David Dalton.
Yes, and also Robert Nichols is back over there in the corner. He has the land that's right beside the ballpark. Yeah, she's up here too. It's good to hear that you're gonna do all this lighting thing. That was something I I thought about. About the lighting, because we don't want our yard lit up every night. And uh, is there a curfew to when the lights gonna be turned off at night?
I'll find out for you.
There have been times.
Question here in a minute.
Also, uh, road, how's the highway gonna be? Because right now with the building over there off of uh Clear Creek. That new development, traffic's coming through there quite a bit. And uh, with this event taking place, probably gonna have a lot of traffic issues.
And then the runoff.
Yeah. I have complained about the water runoff from that property for a long time. I've been there twenty-two years. And um, there's a ditch back there, they call it a perennial stream. And the dry weather, it's dry, you know, there's no water running down through there, but when it rains, that water comes off of that ballpark property. And I mean, really goes down there pretty quick. Now, we had a five hundred year flood here a couple of weeks ago. I've got a garage down there. I had twelve inches of clear water, not mud water, but clear water. In that garage ruined a lot of stuff. And um, it's from the water running off that property. Because if it was backing up from the flood area, it would have been, what, muddy? It was all clear water. So yeah, a lot of questions.
And I just wondered, how would you like to live?
Now, what what's your name? I'm sorry.
Doris Nichols.
Doris Nichols.
I mean, eighty-five.
Eighty-five.
When I was a little girl, I lived here all my life. It was called a pasture, because we had cows next to it. And so, but we are close to the pasture. And I just wondered how you all would like to have that complex next to you. And your home.
Well, life goes on, we understand that.
We do.
But, you know, as far as asking us what we thought about it, that was never. Into the equation at all.
And that's not gonna happen as long as it meets the zoning that's there.
Yeah.
Right, if somebody wanted to change the zoning, you would have to be notified. You would have an opportunity to say, well, I I may not.
Yeah, we know, you know, we realize.
What's being proposed is. Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? All right, we're gonna close public comments. Um. National Historic Site. Um, who who did the type? Development? Was that a consideration that there's a national historic site on the property and any? Yeah, are you gonna change? Does it meet?
No, and that that's why the ball field itself was not being touched. Outside the fence area, outside any of the building areas, um, that that's going to be avoided um as a place this project. And certainly, all of the town ordinances, as we get into the construction drawing phase, will have to be adhered to, so. To any of those extents that that all of that is applicable, it it's absolutely gonna be part of those details.
Okay, EMS, having uh. You know, emergency vehicles getting in and out, you, somebody's gonna, somebody, I can guarantee you, somebody's gonna break a leg there or something.
Again, that that there's. There there are multiple areas um into the facility um from different things, that the loading area at the end is one area over towards the tennis courts and. Coming around that area, there is uh handicap accessible ramps coming down the hill. Uh, the left field corner, if you will, um, is going to be upgraded with the parking area in that location. So if the the county wanted to come in or at that time and make a fence access, that would be possible as well. Any any, there's a number of grade locations where would uh be plausible. Is it going to be different than yesterday? Yes, but it should still be accessible.
Um, stormwater management, um, there were some concerns about runoff. I I have a feeling if if there's gonna be stormwater retention.
Yeah, stormwater ponds, everything.
It might actually get.
Yeah, specific to the field, it actually will get better because we're we're rolling the hill away from the field where the upper parking area is. Currently, that hill kinda comes down into the field, the new grading will roll it away from the field into a collection system. It goes to the stormwater ponds, will actually take a little bit of runoff off of the baseball field specifically. But every, all the impervious area on the site will go through a storage device before it's released.
Filter.
Yes.
All right, um. And then the lighting, have you seen, Tyler, have you, has the city seen a lighting plan?
So we have, um, we've seen a lighting plan. So the lighting plan itself is not a component of the preliminary site plan, that's why I didn't touch on it too much. It is, it is a component of the final site plan. Um. And overwhelmingly, the lighting plan I've seen is compliant with the city's ordinances. Um, there was one little question about our fixture, uh, one of the numbers, but other than that, the actual. Lumens are uh put candles on the ground, meets the city's ordinances for residential stream buffer, um, and that kind of nature.
Is there a curfew shut off time?
So. I was, from a zoning perspective, no, we don't have anything like that. I don't know if PD does like noise, um. That's probably a little bit different, um, but from a zoning perspective, we don't have anything.
So the lighting ordinance does not have a curfew where lights have to be shut off at a certain time, but but the lighting at any time cannot bleed more than one, is it one?
Yes, one one foot candle.
Into a residential area, and that's not a lot of light, so that gives you a little reinsurance. That that there there there's gonna be a lighting plan and and the light cannot bleed onto your property more than one foot candle, which is not a lot.
Yeah, and then I'm at least with the ball, for the baseball fields and stuff, all the light will be pointing in the other direction, um, so that'll be. The fields are one in the opposite direction, so that would be the most impactful. Parking lot lights will, of course. Um, have all the shields and all the things necessary to make it compliant.
I have one more question for you. In your opinion. Does this site plan meet the current zoning ordinance for that property?
Yeah, so as far as requirements are concerned for preliminary site plans, this project is compliant.
Okay. I guess at this point, we're looking for a motion.
Make a motion to. Take a motion for approval and move the planning board grant preliminary site plan approval. Based on the requirements of the city of Hendersonville zoning ordinance with primary considerations. Of sec- of sections five dash twelve, one dash one industrial. And seven dash three dash three review of preliminary site plans. Finding that the Berkeley Mills Sports Complex project is compliant with all applicable requirements.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bob. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Before we adjourn, I would just like to mention to uh, Assistant County Manager. There we is, okay? That, um, you know, the fact that this room is full of folks that haven't, because this was fact, fast track, the public really hasn't had much of an opportunity um, to, to speak, to speak about it. So I, I, I just might recommend that open up some forums, things like that.
The school superintendent. And I'm going to have, I'm going to have a four day meeting in which we'll have the county staff and potentially our folks here from Withersburg now present. To get to, I want, the county is here to do our best for the project we have to complete. That is certainly true. We have a timeline which we have completed. I've said that publicly and I'll reiterate that here. This is a conversation and part of information that I may not have either, as, as was said earlier. Um, we're here as a partner for the school system. Um, so I'm, I'm happy to have that conversation. I don't really have kind of it all yet, but I'm happy to have that conversation and do it in public forum. And I'll call the superintendent, the reasoning that I leave here. I express to him that I believe this is a meeting that needs to be held.
Will you, will you communicate with me or Scott or Patty the, the results of that and when we're going to meet? Because frankly, we have not gotten any information up until Tuesday of this week about what was going, really the, the plans, and I would like to.
Happy to get your contact information on the way out.
Yeah.
And I'm happy to follow up with you, but as I said, I'll, I'll call the superintendent himself this evening and have a conversation uh, with him. So.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are adjourned. Thank you. Go Bearcat.
I'm out and watch the play.
Yeah.
I'll see you.